I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Eddie Stiff will lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day that you have made, and as your Bible declares, we shall rejoice and be glad in it, God. I thank you for the staff that you have assembled for this county, God, to lead our students in higher education, to lead our students into tomorrow, to prepare our students to be leaders of not just tomorrow, but also today. I pray that you have blessed them and their families, God, as they've served faithfully our community. And Father, as they make decisions today, God, I pray that they would lean not on their own understanding, but they would trust in you in all the ways, God. And Father, I thank you that Putnam County is going to be the comeback county. Father, that we're going to lead, Father God, this state into tomorrow because you're raising up a generation of leaders, innovators, entrepreneurs. And I thank you, Father, for the legacy that they are not going to leave behind, but that they are establishing today. We thank you and we praise you today in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
We'll start with a presentation from Courtney Carter about the 2016-17 Title I program, state homeless children requirements and the state foster child requirements.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of indulgence. This is part of the grant requirements that we provide information to the board annually, and so we're going to get through this very quickly. We are very fortunate that our school board has so many previous educators and members that I've worked with personally with our homeless education program. You're very familiar with it, but if you do have questions, please feel free to ask them for me, okay?
Okay.
All right, so let's first talk about a new name for all of our federal programs. What started in 1965 as the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, started by President Johnson, evolved into No Child Left Behind with President Bush, and now is called the Every Student Success Act, or known as ESSA, with President Obama. Several elements of ESSA have not been implemented because they were not in place at the point in time President Trump took office. And he put a moratorium on all those things that were not already going. However, the homeless education piece of ESSA and the foster care piece of ESSA were already in place, were already implemented, and so we are working under those rules from ESSA to accommodate the programs that we work in. Under ESSA, homeless education is reauthorized. There is a larger, larger push for our secondary students that are considered homeless, that they are career-ready, that they are ready to go to college. Some of the things that our guidance counselors at the middle and high schools are going to have to document is that they have met with those homeless high school students and documented that they have spent time with them, talking about career paths, making sure that they are ready to go on to college, that they've finished credits, they're finishing courses and getting their credits so they graduate on time. There is a big push, too, to implement and use the Florida statute that if a student is attested to be homeless at the time they graduate high school, they can go to college for no cost. It's kind of, it's wrapped into the same Florida statute that covers dual enrollment. But if Mr. Skelton or myself signs the affidavit that that child is homeless at the point of graduation, then any public university or college, trade school in the state of Florida will waive their tuition and fees-
Yes.
-with homeless designation. We are no longer Title 10 in homeless, we are Title 9. I always thought Title 9 was, you know, equity gender with sports, but apparently now it falls under homeless as well. Probably-
Did that just happen, Courtney?
Yes, sir. It happened in October. Right, so we-
So it's an umbrella over the gender equity and the homeless? It's all in-
I guess. You know, they decided they didn't like it to be in a Title 10, and they just kind of slid it into Title 9. Now, if you're looking from a HUD standpoint and their titles, homeless becomes Title 7. So, you know, it's alphabets, numbers, soup-
That you're dealing with it.
Right. The main thing is, here in Putnam County, we are charged with having a homeless liaison that's required by law. We are required to identify homeless students, those students who are living in shelter, living doubled up, living in a hotel or a motel, living in substandard housing, whether that's a tent, a shed, a camper. A lot of times, that's kind of a vague term, substandard housing. We usually call it counting heartbeats to the number of beds. You have a two-bedroom house and you have nine heartbeats, you're in substandard housing.
Courtney, does the McKinney-Vento Act fall under this?
Yes, this is, this is the McKinney-Vento Act-
Okay.
...under Title 9. Correct. You're absolutely right. You know, having done this job since 2004, we've seen an evolution from just identifying and making sure we know who the kids are, to really providing a great deal of services, but in addition to that, doing a great deal of documentation for the services we render. We've evolved from being able to identify our own need-specific goals and objectives to very tightly-reined-in, state-selected goals and objectives. We're very fortunate, we're one of 45 out of 67 counties that get the Title 9 grant. Not all the counties in the state, this is a competitive grant. The homeless grant is competitive, but it's also formula-funded, so it means however many children we identify determines what amount of funding we can receive. But it's also competitive in that we must score high enough on the application to be awarded full funding or partial funding. This current survey five that's going to Tallahassee at this time will be the number that they use to fund us starting in 18, well, excuse me, starting in 19 and going through 2021. So we're in the third year, 1718 is the third year of the grant we're working under right now. Okay, so let's talk about these wonderful goals the state has identified for us. The first one has to do with identification, and they say that we, at the very minimum, to be a successful homeless education program, we should be identifying at least 5% of our entire student population. And if you'll look at the figures, they're a little small. We have exceeded that for the past three years. We've actually exceeded it as long as I've been at federal programs. Our highest number was 895. That was back in 2008, which was in the height of the recession. We have a great deal of stipulations with the department in that if a student has been at the same address for more than, they say, two years, we are supposed to consider them no longer in a crisis, but that this has become their plan. Obviously, those folks in Tallahassee do not really understand the world of Putnam County, but that's what we're trying to work with. Right. And then underneath that are some of the activities and deliverables we're required to document with the state. Need B has to do with attendance. Again, we're dealing with a state goal that wants to have 90% of all of our homeless students attending school every day, a 90% attendance rate. Well, when you don't, when your non-homeless students are not attending school at 90%, it's a little difficult.
Yeah, really.
But when you consider the situation these children in particular are living under, they may not have been able to go to sleep the night before because they're on the floor in a living room, and somebody wouldn't turn the TV off until 2:00 in the morning. Or you've got a family where the children are more the adults in the equation than the parents are, and those children are trying to make sure, little brothers and sisters, because what we see is particularly our high school students have the worst attendance rate. It's in the low 80s. I think one grade level was in the 70s. Well, it's not so much those children don't want to be at school, it's the fact they've got bigger responsibilities to deal with than they're just coming to school. And of course, we're also dealing with the high poverty problem that we have with all of our children, and that education is just not at the top of the priority list. Again, I've got data for you on Need B, including the deliverables and the activities. Need C is the other one that's required, and they have a project standard. It has to do with the reading gap, which is the reading distance between homeless and non-homeless students. I think it's interesting that they declare that we should have no more than 15 percentage points difference between our homeless and non-homeless in reading, and no more than 18 points between homeless and non-homeless in math. Brenda McGivern was a sweetheart today. She just gave me the 2017 scores, and I did not have time to put things in, I apologize. But you can see the data from '14, when we were still doing FCAT. They did not do data in 2015 because that was the transition year with FSA, and then 2016. The other piece is the part that they want to see, how many of our homeless students, their graduation and promotion rates. And we still are juggling with FLDOE because for non-homeless students, you establish a cohort when they're in ninth grade, and that cohort is followed, and the decision on the graduation rate is-
The tournament.
-who is still on time to graduate at the end of that fourth year. Well, if you're a homeless student, let's say you're a ninth grader and you go to corner drugstore for 21 days, okay? So they go on our homeless rolls for that 21 days, but they are forever identified as a homeless, part of the homeless cohort. Well, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, we don't have any impact on them because we never identify them as homeless again, but they're held against us or for us based on the cohort.
Yeah.
You know, or-
No, it makes perfect sense because the state, it's just a continual push. You'll get a new governor, they'll come in, they'll try to declare schools being bad again, and they'll want to be the savior of the schools once more, so it's happened every, every time I've seen it happen. That's just what happens. They're going to find a way to show poor graduation rates or poor, poor school grades, whatever.
Right. Well, when you look at our data, though, for our homeless students, it doesn't look that bad. When you've got a 94 promotion rate-
You do a great job.
...and a 95% graduation rate, but that's us working with very tight parameters. Same-case scenario, you have a high school senior that's, family's home burns to the ground. We qualify that student homeless as a 12th-grade senior. What kind of impact did we have ninth, 10th, 11th grade? It's, it's the state of Florida, what can I say?
It'll change the next go-round.
It'll change the next go-round. You're probably right, David. So on the next page, we have the activities and deliverables, information.
I do want to say I deliver food to some of the Project Crays kids that are going to the camp, and they are thrilled, they love it. I just want to commend you on making it fun. I don't even think they know they're learning. It's just something they get to go on field trips and I ask them, "How do you like it?" And they're very, very excited to go. So thanks for going above and beyond and finding people that do that, that's, you know, that really want to be there and enjoy it and get excited for the kids to-
Oh, yeah.
So thanks again.
You're welcome.
I know that's a huge part of the summer, you know, support, which is great.
It is.
You ride the bus and, like we used to ride, and feed and go to the neighborhoods. It's amazing. The kids, they depend on it.
Oh, the families, absolutely, especially this summer. Let's talk a little bit about some new things with ESSA, and that is a new foster care piece. At one time, we could qualify students as homeless if they were living with relative care, if DCF had removed the child from the home and placed him with a grandmother or an aunt. We can no longer do that as of December 16, 2016. We're going to see numbers drop. But we are charged by federal government to identify children in foster care, children who are known by the department and are temporarily or permanently placed with someone else. This can be a licensed foster care facility, someone who gets the $871 a month for having the child in their home. That can also be children who are in the foster care shelters, which we don't have shelters here in Putnam County, but that is one of the identifiers. But also for children in relative care, that grandparent that doesn't get anything for taking that child in, but still fostered, being fostered. And the state charges us with basically giving foster care children the same rights as children that are homeless under McKinney-Vento. Immediate enrollment without records, documentation for attendance, academic progress. But the big piece is the school of origin piece, and that's the thing that our transportation department, I've tried to feed them pound cakes at least three times a year. I do, I do. Because McKinney-Vento says that if a child becomes homeless in Crescent City and the family has to temporarily come up to Palatka to stay with a relative, our district is required by federal law to transport that child back to Crescent City for the balance of the school of origin year. That's also going to be part of the foster care piece, it's part of the federal law, that if we have a child who goes into foster care, even if it's across a county line, we will be responsible for providing and seeing that that transportation is provided so that student can stay in their school of origin. Yes, ma'am?
And of course, they funded this, right? The money, it's going to cost us. Yeah, I'm being facetious.
I know you are. I can tell that tone of voice.
You know, they just put more and more on us all over, from all angles, and they don't give us the money to do it, and it costs money.
Right, and-
It does, but you know, that's the least we can do to get those kids keep some stability.
And you know, and then that's, you know, to my own fault, that is where we always start, is what is best for this child. You know, it is not, you know, I don't know a single child that wants to be poor, not a single child wants to be homeless.
Or designated as a homeless, or-
Right. No child wants to have bad parents. You know, it's not their fault, you know, and we cannot fix 18 hours of the day, but we can darn sure do the best we can for six of them.
And that, that attitude that you've carried through the years is exactly why we've had national and international recognition for you.
Well, and, you know, along those lines, Courtney, and they know it, you know, I consider it a great loss when we lost you in the classroom, when you came out of the classroom to do this. But what you and Brad have done through the years for these kids is remarkable, and you know, as a guidance counselor, you know, I saw it every day, what you and Brad did. And, you know, it's not just during those six hours that you're worrying about those children.
Oh, no.
It's 24 hours a day.
We take phone calls all the time.
We, and like David said, the recognition, you don't get enough recognition for what you do.
Well, thank you, thank you. And you know, it is not, it is not a two-person show.
And your staff, I should say, as well.
Well, and we have amazing community participation. You know, St. Vincent's to Paul with the shoe cards. We have organizations that give us grocery store cards for our unaccompanied youth for Brad. We covered 283 for Christmas this year, and that was Putnam Community Hospital, that was the college, that was staff from the school board office, that was postal. I have a little old lady down in Pomona Park, and she calls me every year and takes three children because her grandchildren don't call her, so she's spending Christmas on us.
Oh.
How am I, you know, how cool is that? So quickly, that's our information about, and we're in the process, Neola has established some new board policies that you're going to be voting on for this foster care piece. Charlie Douglas and I are working on a MOU that has to be established between all the child welfare agencies, community partnership for children, as well as DCF. We're also working with our schools to develop some really clean protocols that when DCF investigators or case managers come into the schools to see children, we're working on some protocols to where it's the same everywhere we go and everywhere they show up. Also trying to really focus in on looking at how those children are after that investigator leaves the school, making sure guidance counselors know this child has had some trauma with somebody coming to school and questioning, not to get in DCF's business at all, not to have any, not to have any, you know, interaction as far as the investigation goes, but to make sure that we, as a district, and as particular, our school personnel, are proactive with the emotional needs of those children once that investigator has left. You know, it's a little hard to recognize as adults, but you know, if you're a fifth grade student and you get called up to the office and you get interrogated on very sensitive information, and then you're expected to go back to class and act like nothing's happened. You know, we've got to be sensitive to the needs of these kids and unaware.
Absolutely. When you're interrogated and almost forced to say something against one of your parents or, you know, I've seen so many kids, but DCF is doing their job, but it's still very traumatizing to the students.
Right. And as a, and as a school, we really can't do anything about that. Legally, we really can't do anything about that. All we can do is stand by and keep our mouth shut, but when it's all over-
They're in the aftermath for it.
-to be there for those children is important. So we're working on getting those protocols in place this summer. Additional data on the sheet talks about how many students are homeless versus non-homeless, the percentages. We have almost two-thirds of our homeless identified are elementary students. Part of that is the nature of the beast. Little kids tell you everything. High school students tell you nothing. Some of that is because parents are still involved at the elementary level, and you can get information from parents. Most of our elementary schools, the children only have one or maybe two classroom teachers so they get to know the kids better than a high school. But it also talks about here about the students with disabilities and our gifted students identified, and the attendance again. Very quickly, I want to talk to you about some other programs that Title I has been doing this summer. Our, we are in our fourth year of the Luncheon Literacy Program, Meals on Wheels. This is something I started when Linda Osborne was doing it with her migrant program. You know, the most sincerest form of flattery is to copy somebody. And Ms. Osborne, with her migrant program, does a wonderful job feeding children with one bus. Well, we're doing it with four more buses, and on average, we are feeding over 250 children a day.
Wonderful.
We're also providing, in addition to lunch, we're providing literacy materials, books, we're providing information for parents, the parent involvement. We have some absolutely amazing workers on these buses. Dawn Ella Monroe, who is in the school year, usually at Aquila, she Facebooks where her bus stops are going to be.
Wonderful.
She takes flyers to the churches out in that part of the county so that everybody knows where they can get a lunch. We're just very, very blessed with that, and I'm very happy that we've been able to- that's, that's a Title I program in itself. The other piece, Superintendent Surrance joined us for our luncheon, our culminating luncheon about two weeks ago, the My Florida, My Future program. That is a very collaborative effort because we're using not only homeless funds, we're using Title I funds, we're using migrant education funds to combine together to provide a program for fourth and fifth grade children here in this county that is, in essence, a dropout prevention. So many of our children, because of their economic standing, don't get to go on field trips. They do not have any virtual idea of what a middle-class home looks like on the inside. You know, they're living third and fourth generation with a trailer that has busted-out windows and holes in the floor, and they just do not see it getting any better. So My Florida, My Future tries to assuage that some. We have, we started out last year with less than 50. We had 93 children this year. We took them to Water Management District to see the jobs that are at water management. From the head of the Water Management's executive office, we all went all the way out to the motor pool where the boats and the four-wheelers, and they talked to Preston Ward about what kind of education you had to have to be a mechanic out there. Took them into the IT department. The children's eyes popped out on STEMS when the head of their IT department talked about that he was hiring software engineers straight out of four-year programs for $75,000, and he couldn't keep them. And the kids were going, even the teachers were going, "Wow." We took them to Jacksonville University for a field trip to see JU. We took them out to St. John's River State College. They gave us a wonderful tour, took us through the flow arts, did a performance. It was just wonderful. And then we culminated with formal lunches where we, the children went out to lunch and had to deal with forks and knives and spoons and real plates and real glasses because you think about it, cafeteria, all you eat with is a sport.
Yeah.
But what we are really excited about is this last piece of, this last piece of data, last page. 96 students attended for 14, well, 16 days, 14 of those days were instruction. We pre-and post-tested these children. They had an increased average of 16 points in reading fluency with a range of anywhere from no improvement to over 56 words a minute reading fluency increase-
Wow, wonderful.
-in 14 days.
Wow, awesome.
The comprehension piece, which was the Florida history, look at the growth there. That is what we feel like at Title I speaks for the programs that we do, is helping our children across the district and making a difference.
Courtney, excuse me, has the state sent you to Mexico yet?
No, the state hasn't sent me to Mexico.
Well, they have, Linda and Lucy, Lucia, and I know Charlie Crist sent me, and you talked about the mobile home with the windows broken out. That looks like a Holiday Inn Express compared to what the kids, when I toured central Mexico, where a lot of our children do come from, live in. It was, it, there is no comparison.
Oh, it's horrible.
A squalor can't even compare to what a child would walk into a Dollar General in Palatka and think they were in, you know, Disney World. That's just the difference of what they see. It's incredible.
Well, and, and the thing is, what we have to recognize and what we've got to communicate to our children, to our students, is there are opportunities with education to change this. Education is the way out.
It's the way out.
Education and the free public education is what this nation was founded on, and we have to remember that every single day.
We got a valedictorian. Two years ago at Crescent City High, there was a migrant all the way, you know-
Alberto Aguirre.
Parents could not speak a word of English.
He was, he was valedictorian the year Sarah graduated. He is now the head financial officer at Stetson University.
Wow.
Is that not amazing? That is incredible. We, Title 10 grant, Title 9 grant has already been submitted for this year, and we're crossing our fingers, our funding stays the same. We're in the process at the federal programs office of working on the Title I Part A. Ms. Osborne's working on Title III and 1C. Any input or information you'd like to share, you know, share with us, or questions, our office is always open. Besides that, I appreciate the time you've given me. I went a little longer than I thought, but I enjoyed your questions.
You wouldn't be, Courtney, if you didn't be a little long-winded.
She's passionate about her-
So classy.
She used to teach for me.
Courtney, thanks for the lunch.
You're welcome.
With a group of kids, they were very well-mannered and a good group of kids. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you very much.
Thank Brad as well.
Yes, your whole team.
I thank everybody else.
We know it takes a lot of work together.
Madam Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to break in for just a minute.
Okay.
If I could ask Superintendent Surrance to come to the middle and get Ms. Crawford to walk down there with him. I have a presentation I want to make, and I'm going to let the superintendent present this award to Ms. Crawford. This is something she has earned. She, I don't think she realized it until today. You go on over there by the superintendent. Ms. Crawford has, along with other board members, been working diligently to obtain certification as a certified board member in the state of Florida. And it is quite a calling to do that because it signifies that you care enough about the job that you do that- the job that you do, that you're going to involve yourself above and beyond normal training to receive this certification from the state. And she is our chairman, but I would like to read this. The Florida School Board Association recognizes Jane Crawford, Putnam County School Board, as a certified board member, June 2017. Signed, Tim Harris, Florida School Board Association President, and Andrea Messina, who is the executive director. And Rick, if I could get you to take this and give it to Ms. Crawford and get a picture, I think that would be a wonderful thing.
Thank you for doing that.
And y'all.
Congratulations, Chairman Crawford.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Now, I.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
Next, we have our public comment section, and as of right now, only have one.
One coming.
Two. We'll start with Allegra Kitchens.
My comments for Ida Bell, too, you are going to make it into public comments, and wait until it comes up on the agenda.
Do it, do it now.
Do it now, please.
And we'll, if it gets into discussion, we're going to get back into it, I guess. Can't we?
Appreciate that.
Allegra Kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street, Palatka, Florida. I just wanted to address a couple of things concerning the proposed sale of the Campbell
School Building. I listened to the previous meeting on YouTube, and I was a bit astounded at the lack of knowledge of not only the board, but members that spoke from the audience, of how the property appraiser arrives at values. So, I wanted to give you a little brief history. First of all, I was employed by the Putnam County Property Appraiser for 36 years. Then I was a city commissioner for nine years, and now I'm a freelance troublemaker. So, what I wanted to tell you is the property appraiser's value of $1,312,454 on the Campbell School Building, that figure is not picked at random by the property appraiser. One of the people that spoke, not the board, but one of the people from the audience seemed to think that the property appraiser randomly picks the value, and then his value sets the market. Florida statutes control the property appraiser's office very carefully, and the property appraiser's office is under the audit and the control of probably your favorite people, the Department of Revenue. And as you all know, or maybe not know, the Department of Revenue is way tougher than the Internal Revenue Service. The Department of Revenue says that the property appraiser has to, Florida statutes say the property appraiser has to appraise all property in the state of Florida at 100% of the fair market value. That value is determined by recorded sales on deeds in the area, in Putnam County. The property appraiser analyzes those sales, and then they arrive at the value of property. If their sales are off, the Department of Revenue audits the property appraiser's sales every three years. If those sales are under, or if the property appraisers assess the values are under or over, the sales, and the Department of Revenue gives them a letter and basically tells them they have to either up or lower their values based on sales. The assessed value of buildings is determined by the cost reproduction new. That means the property appraiser talks to every contractor in the county to find out what it costs to build buildings per square foot, residential, commercial, industrial, whatever. Then the property appraiser takes that price per square foot, times the square foot of the building, and it's graded up or down depending on the construction of the building, like if it's wood or concrete, and the size and shape of the building, and then the age of the building. It's conditioned down according to age, but if it's been upgraded, then it'll be conditioned up based on the upgrade. Land values are determined by checking the sales of recorded land in Putnam County. Again, I stress recorded. So, when the property appraiser has a value of $1,312,540 on that property, it includes that 35,000 square foot plus building, plus 1.57 acres of land. So, I wanted to make sure that you all understood that the property appraiser's value is nothing to make light of and to ignore, you must take it into consideration. Mr. Galloway, one of the appraisers, he told you all that it, it might take two years to sell for between $600,000 and $995,000. I would ask you, the upkeep of that building, according to what I heard at the meeting, is $30,000 a year. If you wait two years to sell this building, you might get $600,000 to $995,000, and you might get more. Your investment in that is only $30,000 a year. You're investing $60,000 of upkeep to possibly sell a building for between $600,000 and $995,000, and it's conceivable you could sell it for over $1 million. I just got the multiple listing stats from Mark Spalding in my computer yesterday, and while sales aren't humongous in Putnam County, they have increased tremendously. And by tremendously, I don't mean 100%, but the market, real estate sales are going up every year. So, I would ask you not to sell this property for $162,500. And yes, I understand that you're getting $162,500 in credit, but that credit, the company is going to let their students take their courses, let their, let your teachers rent their apartment, they're going to pay for it, the benefit's to them, not to you. It's just, it's credit on paper. In essence, you're selling a 162,000, you're selling a $1.3 million building for $162,500. As per sales, let me give you all two examples that were a couple of years ago. The TD Bank, the TD Bank building is a little over 22,000 square feet, it sold for $650,000. You all bought this building for $500,000, and it's a little over 22,000 square feet. Those sales alone tell you that the Campbell building should sell for more than what it's, 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 it's offered right this moment. And finally, let me close on this. I listened to the YouTube thing in detail. The man you're dealing with, the company you're dealing with, they, they informed you that the person you're negotiating with is not the person that's going to own the building. They couldn't tell you how many students, they couldn't tell you how many offices. Basically, everything they told you, they couldn't give you a straight answer. I would ask you not to sell that building for $325,000 cash even, let alone $162,500 cash. Hold off for two years. You don't have to take the first offer that comes down the tube. Wait for two years. It's a good investment, and I do have a dog in this race. My family's been in Putnam County paying taxes since 1923. My parents pay taxes on school taxes. I pay school taxes, so I do have a dog in this race. Appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to get a better look at tax rolls personally, and it helps the whole county.
Okay, June Thompson.
Can I let him speak first?
Vito. That's up to the chairman.
State your name and address, please. I forgot to ask Allegra to do that.
And I forgot to start the timer, chairperson.
Yeah, we need to, I know, that's why.
Don't worry, I'm not going to go over half an hour.
I was worried that you had me keeping time, and I got to thinking.
I'm so sorry, I forgot.
I'm not going to go half an hour, so.
We know.
Okay, all right. So, I've got a couple of comments, and.
We got your letter, by the way. I did not realize that you'd given it to us till I just.
Yeah, we just got them, so.
Oh, so you didn't have a chance to digest all that, because it was, it was a thousand-word letter.
I sped-read.
Would have been better emailed.
You need to mail them or email them.
I thought maybe it might have more impact.
I like a hard copy.
We don't have offices here, we.
Okay, well.
For future reference, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, well, let me start off. I would like to say, good afternoon, I hope everybody's well. And the only reason I'm here is because I care about the community. That's the only reason. You know, I, I want to contribute to the community's well-being. That's why I'm standing up here right now. I'm renovating a house on the south side, and it's a beautiful house. It's going to be one of the most beautiful houses in the, in the historic districts, north or south. And I hope one day you get a chance to see it, because I've been working really hard on it, let me tell you. So, the south side, we've expressed this before, the south side prefers the Campbell Building to be a school, because of the obvious positive revitalization effect that it would have upon the district. I mean, a grade A school in the south side would have a very strong revitalization effect. But due to various factors, the school district believes need to sell the building. Okay, so now this becomes a business transaction. That's what it is. It's not charity, and it's not philanthropy. This is a business transaction. And to make a credible decision, there's a lot of information that has to be, you know, processed. So, unfortunately, some of this information, we're not privy to, and it's hard for us to do our due diligence and evaluate the, 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 what's the word I'm thinking of?
Dynamics.
Well, the validity of the information. You know, you do, you do due diligence, you try to independently verify what we're getting. So, as an example, we have two, we have multiple appraisals for this building. Two of them are right around $1 million, and we've got one at 390. So, we have no information about whether or not, how these, what's the basis of these discrepancy? So, that makes it difficult for us, and you as well. So, having said that, this is a business transaction. So, the way I see it, basically, and talking to Synergy Buildings rep, Jim McMahon, they're coming here for, I initially thought they were coming here for, for the, let's see, coming here for clients. I thought they were initially coming here for clients, but Jim has conveyed that that's not the case. They're not here for clients. They're here for the workforce. So, having said that, I'll accept that. So, if they're, if they're coming to our community for the workforce, then basically they have a waiting list. Synergy Building has a waiting list, a clientele waiting list. They don't have the personnel to take in all the clients that they want. Okay, so they, they want, they want to expand their workforce. So, so this training that they're talking about, this scholarship that they're talking about, this is, this is Synergy Buildings hiring new people and training their own people. So, the in-kind trade that is part of the deal is the community, the community then would be training Synergy's workforce, rather than Synergy expending the cost of hiring and training their workforce, which is the normal operating procedure for most companies. So, that's the way I view the in-kind trade. I, I don't like the in-kind trade at all. I think if we sell the building, we should get a fair price for it, and it, based on the various factors, and, and it should be a cash deal. That's my personal opinion. So, now, what's the value of the building? That's quite the big debate. What's the value of the building? Got these appraisals, or it's a big discrepancy between them. But the tax appraiser in our community estimated it at 1.3 million. He based that on, at the 25, that's about $28 a square foot. Now, I'm assuming that he had based that on previous commercial building sales. That's the normal procedure. So, this building, this been right here, $25 a square foot, and then we dumped in millions of dollars renovating it. So, there's one. Then you got the federal building, First Federal, I think it's Sixth and St. John's Avenue, that sold $650,000. That went for $38 a square foot. So, these are the reference points. We have another reference point. Eventually, TD Bank is being, is up for sale on Caldwell Banker's website for $100 a square foot. Okay, so these are our reference points. Now, Jim is going to come up here, and he's going to make an argument that they're not relevant. Okay, fine, but we can debate that.
Okay, well, he's going to wrap it up.
Okay, so, so I would just encourage the school board to take this, this is a business deal. It's not charity, not philanthropy, this is business. We have to be smart about it, because it affects the whole city. It does affect the whole city. It'll affect, it'll directly affect all the commercial property owners, and it will indirectly affect the residential owners. So, I personally think that maybe the building's going to cost maybe $1.25 million to buy it and renovate it, and that's, comes out to be $35 a square foot. And then what's the value of the building after that? And we've had, you know, we've got a $100 square foot building, you know, if it was $50 a square foot, if you spent $35 a square foot buying and renovating the building, and then it was worth 50, that return on investment is 43%. That's pretty damn good. That's pretty good. But that building, I personally think, because it's the most beautiful building in Putnam County, that Mediterranean revival architecture, and that building could be easily worth $70, $75 a square foot, well, that's 2.5, 2.7 million dollars. So, we have to be careful of the worst-case scenario, Synergy Building buys the building for a song, and then flips it, and makes all the money, and makes us look foolish.
Thank you. Okay, June.
Hi, I'm June Thompson, 617 Emmett Street in Palatka. And from what I understand, that what the Campbell School Building is being sold for, all the cash that will go into your hands, do you know how much that will be actually, the cash transferred to your hands, to the school board? I mean, like, I, I think it may be as low as, what, $39,000? Is that right?
No.
The others in kind?
We haven't committed to anything, first of all, and I think we'll know later what the offer is.
Yeah, we're going to, that will be brought up later.
That's part of our discussion.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's what, um.
That's the point. The alternative.
Yeah. Well, anyway, that's what I had heard, and I just wanted to mention, if it was going to be something like that, there are just so many things, and I spoke to y'all a few months ago about how much the community could use it for community enrichment, or for like the Bartram Trail Museum, or museums, or education, or the arts in general, and that would just mean so much to our neighborhood as far as like making it, being rich, and people moving back down here and everything. If it winds up, you know, going for a price like that, we could raise the money. I could buy it for that. You know, I mean, I, I would be willing to invest that much, I believe, so much in the building. I could invest the initial money and raise it some other way. I'm just saying, it means that much to us to have that benefit to the neighborhood rather than be a distractor.
Thank you, June, so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item D is the consent agenda. Mr. Buckles, do you have anything you would like to pull?
No, ma'am.
Nope.
Nope. And neither do I.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda passes as written. So, now we're going to way over to, and there's no emergency items today. It's exciting. K, discussion of unfinished business.
I make a motion to remove item K1 from the agenda, or from the table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so this was about the FSBA Legislative Committee designating a member, and we so generously offered, but we didn't want to do it because Kathy wasn't here. So, we, we knew you were on a committee with the finance, and we thought, well, this would be something sensible if you chose that you would be okay with that, so.
I'm fine.
Okay, then I would like to nominate Kathy Jorgensen for the FSBA representation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
We really did kind of do it, but we, we didn't.
You did the interlocking thing with that one.
Yes, we did.
Oh, that's what it was.
Yes, we did. That's what happens when you don't show up.
I think my exact words were, if you snooze, you lose.
I was sick, I didn't want to share it.
No excuse. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, item two, discussion input and action on designating a member and an alternate to serve on the Florida School Board.
That's what we just did, sorry.
No?
They say the same thing.
Oh, it's on there twice?
Yeah.
You voted on it.
I took it off the table.
One was taking it off the table.
I need to keep up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Need to.
L, discussion, new business. The first item is discussion input and approval of the budget amendments for May 2017.
For the May 2017 budget amendments, there's a little piece of good news. In the general fund, our revenue increased 290,918. Of course, I was expecting that, and that's been built into our workshops and everything. It's just a long time in coming. But the first piece of it is the charter school capital outlay dollars that come in, appropriated in the general fund, and we pay it out to the charter schools, and that's 13,697. Everything else has to do with an increase in the fourth calculation, F E F P, with the biggest piece of that being an increase in our FTE count for February. We got. We got some glitches fixed, I think, in our reporting and we're finally getting paid for the number that has been estimated as our FTE enrollment and everything. So, that was an increase of 250,000, 258,000. The prior year audit adjustment amount was changed and so, we got to bring that revenue in of 25,000, but we did have a proration to funds available as they corrected things. They didn't have enough money across the board to give all school districts what they were supposed to have, so we had a reduction of 29,880. Everything else is an increase in different categoricals within the general fund and those monies went directly to those categoricals. So, since it was so late in the year, instead of putting those into account strips to spend, I put it, rolled it all into fund balance. So, you'll see next if there's an increase in fund balance of 255,763. Everything else in the FEFP, like I said, instead of going into fund balance, it goes into that line item project for those projects to spend because those are state categoricals that are limited on how we can spend them. In capital projects, it's that same 13,697 that the law requires we show as, in, coming in and going out in both funds for the charter schools. In school food service, there's no change in revenue, just changes around as they needed in different objects. In the special revenue funds, we received the roll forwards for IDEA Part B and IDEA Part B preschool for a total increase in revenue of 82,63205. And internal service funds, which is Nefec, one of their projects, Principals Leadership Academy collected more revenue than they had budgeted, so they wanted to bring that in in order to spend it and that was 6,765. Also, they removed $3,235 from their retained earnings account to bring to a account strip to also spend in that same fund. And in the enterprise funds, which are also Nefec, there were no changes, just a few change in object expenditure accounts, but no new revenue. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I would like to add a couple of things that have a little different impact on that. You and I have spoken, an article ran concerning your meeting with the county commission concerning paramutual funds.
Yes, sir.
And, we have had a pretty good discussion on that and I was very disappointed at their first communication because I don't think they, they're, they know or realize, the people that have been there, how, how much the school district has partnered with the community and the county over the years. And, I just wanted to point out, just briefly, some things Rhonda and I've briefly talked about, but we, as a school board, some years ago donated the old Johnson School, which was probably valued anywhere from half a million to a million dollars. The Pomona Park School, we gave to the town of Pomona Park. And, you know, that's being utilized, I suppose, for Christian, red and Christian migrant, city water and sewage. In Crescent City, we brought city water and sewage all the way down 309 to Union Avenue, all the way to Crescent City High School and set and putting, putting in a spray, a fluent drain field at, at over a $500,000 cost. That was, that was for everybody that lives adjacent to there to spur growth and opportunity for people to tie in.
Yes, sir.
In Palatka, we did the same thing. I think Seattle Over Turf Superintendent, when they ran the city water and sewage from, from Palatka High or out to Kelly Smith School, and that allowed Walmart to come in and tie in the city water and sewage and out to Tierra Woods, all the other subdivisions to tie in at tremendous cost. And, we've donated property for the senior center that is adjacent to the Mosley Campus. There's not a single sign on that building that says, "Thank you to the district school board of Putnam County for the donation of this property." And, anyway, not that it needs to be there, but I'm just letting people know, they don't really know.
What have we done?
We've given portables for the recreation department to use at Triangle Park, for offices, portables to the sheriff's office to utilize for training and for classes for our law enforcement officers, SWAT training classes. We've utilized school buses to carry SWAT teams out on missions to arrest people. And, and these are just a few things. We participated with sidewalks at Palatka, near Palatka High and, and the ballpark over by the Campbell Building. That was donated by the school board. That's an old bus compound and PE field for when you were a little girl.
It was the bullpen.
And, and it really, those are just to get started. So, it's not that we work in a vacuum and we don't care about what occurs in the county. Every, every municipality, we, we donated, the board donated lakefront property on our ball field down at the old Miller Intermediate to the town of Crescent City to utilize as a, as a boardwalk. And, they received grants to, for people to watch eagles and stuff. And, nobody knows and it just, it adds up to millions of dollars and then, first time somebody has a budget crunch, they say, well.
Can I just say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chairman, in fairness to our commissioners.
Yeah, thank you.
The interim or new budget director, CFO, who prepared the budget, the county commissioners had no idea that she had left this out and it was not their wish at all.
Right.
When it got down to it.
I hear that, but I just.
But, I'm glad you brought all that up.
Yes, and I'd like for you to keep a record of all that. Write it down for us.
Bring it up, Rhonda.
And, we're going to go by that because if that occurs, again, if.
We're loaded for bear.
Well, we're, we're, we're on the same side.
I know we are, but. Well, that's what they said. They need to be when, they did, they were gracious.
Well, I want to thank Rhonda and Nikki and Kathy for attending that budget hearing because I, I think you stated our case well. I was out of town, but, thank y'all for going and our commissioners have been very supportive after the fact.
And, it may come back again, you know, they, they went ahead and approved it for now and we did talk about the 11th hour, so it may be that they give us notice next time. And, I don't know if they truly knew that it was the last minute for us because they're on a different fiscal year. Their fiscal year starts October 1st, so they might not be aware that we've already done this process. Our fiscal year has already started, so that's what caused the first major panic mode. And, there was one little, maybe discrepancy in the paper or maybe a correction, I don't know that it's, that it needs to be stated, but everything that they were saying and they said that, I had said we would get 1.5 million dollars more in property, they get 1.5 million dollars more in property taxes than us. I was talking about, they have the ability to set their millage wherever they want to, up to 10 mills, and we're set by statute and can't go above it without a vote of the public. And, I said their millage alone brought them in 1.5 times more than ours. We're talking about between 11 and 12 million dollars more, not 1.5 million dollars more as the paper stated. So, I wanted to throw that out there since it came up and we're talking about it, but I think we will receive well and I hope it won't come up again on the radar, but it possibly could, so this will be great information to have.
Like Kathy said, that, you know, just said they were kind of blindsided and, and like the superintendent, and we talk about this building deal, you know, the new laws that have come out of Tallahassee, put the school board back to the wall on some of the things that could possibly occur. So, it, it's all bad timing, but we don't, we, we need to realize we're all in it together. But, that's, that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you having such a good memory. Write that down.
Do we have to have a motion to approve the budget?
I move that we approve the budget amendments.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, item two, discussion input and action on sale of the Campbell Building. I'd like to ask our Realtor, Gigi Galloway, to come up, please. She's got some things to share with us.
Well, I believe this is my fourth meeting and it's nice to say that you save everything good for last. It's the first meeting I've been to where everybody except one person hasn't left. So, I think we're on a, a hot subject matter and we, I, I like to tell people, we all have opinions, we all agree to disagree, and let's hope we can be civil about it and have a better understanding and bring everybody more together because I think we're all working towards the same common goal. As, as to the issue of value or assessment, let's picture your house and your house is always worth more. Your house is your castle. No matter how small or how large, your house is always going to be worth more in your mind than maybe you might sell it for. Okay? Regardless of you, what the tax assessor says or regardless what you as the individual say it is, or you as the bank or the appraiser says it is. It really gets down to a simple equation. What is somebody willing to pay for your house at the time that you want to sell it? Now, I would encourage anybody that thinks that they can get 1.2 million dollars for that property to go start a GoFundMe fund and let's see how fast you can raise, maybe $50,000 or surprise me and maybe you can raise 1.25 million dollars. But, with that saying, I just want to let everybody understand, value is a very touchy issue. It's almost like you don't want to talk about somebody else's spouse or their children. And, when it comes to value, value is only worth what somebody is willing to pay for it at the time that you want to sell it. So, with that, let me also first try to clarify some misunderstanding about where we were on a value, a, a, let me first say that I have been working with a, a great Realtor in y'all's community, Mark Spalding, who is here, who is with Caldwell Banker, Ben Bates.
What's his last name?
Spalding.
Okay.
Did I pronounce it wrong?
I think you know.
I think I know who it is.
Okay. Should, should I be dealing with him?
Ah.
At your own risk.
Something, something tells me he knows a little bit more about your brother than he does you. I've checked it out, don't worry. Okay? I've checked it out. Anyway, so, we have, we have been working together. He's, he's, he's representing the buyer and, and the buyer also has a personal representative. If y'all recall the last meeting that we had, there was some paperwork about, talking about maybe what we have as an offer or something. Well, I, I believe I sent over last Friday and so, y'all should have in your package. I want you to know and the public to know that the first time that we had a signed contract by the prospective buyer, Mark, Mark Spalding was able to get that signature on July 7th, which was last Friday, and that was immediately sent over to y'all. So, I want everybody in the room to realize that this document hadn't been hidden from the public or anything. A, a document in my profession is only good is when the potential buyer signs it. So, now, it is public information and it's available through.
There's several copies.
Through the board. And, so, if anybody would like to look at it, have y'all disperse it, but we received that on Friday, July 7th and, and this was the first meeting. And, I also want to let y'all know, we almost came to your meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
And, we.
I'm glad we did.
And, I'm glad y'all got good people here because they said, "No, it's Thursday." So, but anyway, so, I just wanted to clear that up and let everybody know that you have a document there. So, in front of you, you basically have a, a document that our company is presenting to you from the representative who's representing the buyer. You've got, I'd like to make a couple of points. You can either accept it as is, you can reject it, or you can modify it. I, I will tell you through the, in, in my obligation with you, even though I act as a transactional broker, my fiduciary relationship is with you, the school board, who has hired me to come up with the best value for the building. And, and, and might as well because it's a public entity, the citizens of Putnam County. This is a different, unique situation because when two business people or two private sector people work together, you can sit around and negotiate and cut debt. But, we're dealing with a public sector and a private sector. So, in 34 years of business, we've done this a lot. It's not unusual for me, but to some people, they might see it as an unusual situation. It's not, we see it all the time. But, you have to watch out for the best interest. Y'all are driven to watch out for the best interest of the school, district, and the citizens of Putnam County. So, regardless which way you go, I challenge you to make the best decision and I don't think any one of us representing the buyer or seller are doing it for a commission. The buyer, by his own admission, has, has brought up that there was an appraisal done three or four years ago at around $350,000. So, I think it's safe to say that there was an appraisal out there, which we have not seen, but if you do present time value of money, and, and I've heard also tonight that the appraisal was at 390. So, anyway, if you do present time value of money, that puts the value on the building somewhere between, I'm just going to say, depending on what numerical number you use, somewhere probably around 495 to 575, maybe 625. Again, the tax assessor has that value, that, that's fine. But, I would just bring to attention that I was told by, you, you, we've had it on the market for about seven months and I know nowhere in writing, but something tells me y'all have been trying to sell that building for three?
Three and a half.
Four years. And, so, I would, I would just challenge anybody out in the audience is where, over the last three and a half years, have those potential buyers come to you to make any offer? Now, our company did a study and, and we, we ran historically back through the newspaper and I believe there was maybe talk of a $350,000 offer or $450,000 offer. So, when I get back to talking about value, I want everybody in the room to consider, yes, it might be worth 1-1 to some people and to some people it might be worth 300 or 400, but who's willing to buy that property today, tomorrow, six months from now? What I was told by the buyer's rep is that if anything was changed on this offer, they would probably withdraw. Okay? Now, they're here, they'll have time to talk, but in negotiating, you know, we're all big boys and big girls. Sometimes in negotiation, you take your toys and go home. Sometimes you take your toys and stay and let's work out and let's change, let's negotiate and change the rules of the game or let's make it fair to both sides. I believe for a sale to be successful on the Campbell Building, it must be a win-win situation for both sides, both the seller and the buyer. My company is willing to work with you and try to have that happen, regardless if they say they will walk, if, if, if you change anything on this contract, that they will walk. I would also like to consider y'all to maybe, for us to reevaluate the property and see if there, if, if there's a way we can reevaluate, reevaluate values and, and study the comps because we have found no comps. But, our company is re-willing to do that again and run a whole new BPO at our expense to tell you what the value could be at some time in the future. But, I'll leave that to you. I've done the talking. I, I will tell you that the buyer's here. I will tell you that the owner of the company, as I told y'all last time, is an impeccable individual. He's a prodigy genius on computers. He's done everything in our community. I'm not representing him, I'm representing y'all, but the individual, as far as doing what he says he can do, he can do that. I have 110% confident that Synergy Energy Company, they're doing a similar situation in Holly Hill, which is located between Ormond Beach and Daytona Beach. So, I, I'm prepared to, at some point in time, talk about value or counters, but really what y'all are directed, what, what I'm asking y'all to direct, is you have an offer on the tape and you either need to accept it, reject it, or modify it.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Galloway?
Well, I, I do. I don't know if y'all want to discuss, you know, anything first or, you know.
I would like to say something if I might. Nikki and I were on the board when we moved into this building. I think we were the only ones. And, we had a serious offer from our middle school charter school of $300,000. And, it was a different superintendent and a different board and a whole different thing and they were a competition, so we weren't going to sell to them and we let that go. And, I personally don't want to let any more go. That's just the way I feel about it. We'll be sitting here three years from now and somebody will offer us 75 and we could have gotten 162 three years ago.
And, the problem that the board is facing now, and I've had several phone calls, is that now we're, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place with laws being passed that if we have ancillary property that's being nonutilized, in October, the, the charter school entity can have an attorney come by and. uh, in October, the, the, a charter school entity can have an attorney come by and serve a paper, and they could, they could probably just take and seize our property.
Your estate.
Now, I don't like that, but that's still not, you know, I, I know that if the board chose, we could probably work with the superintendent somehow, figure out a way to utilize the building. But then you'd have to check with the attorney to make sure that, that you could negate that and, and not be subject to that deal. So that's something else that it's totally, it's every day that's passed has put this board further behind an eight ball as far as getting to a point.
Chairwoman, can I come up and speak to that?
But anyway, I, I'm, I'm really, you know, that's good for now. I just be up to the board to make that decision.
Superintendent?
Yeah, I just want us to, you know, we have time, and again, Octo- the October date is, we basically need to just publish our vacant property. But, you know, we have time, and I, I would seriously want us to consider maybe, uh, having our broker go back and, uh, maybe counter, go back and just test, test what we can get. And, um, you know, I think we owe it to our taxpayers, our community, to get the best possible market price we can get right now. So I would, um, ask you to consider, um, letting our broker go back, counter, and let's just see what, um, what we can do with the time we have right now. So we're under no time constraint necessarily, except in the future, we do need to publish our vacant property. But I, I would like to try to test and see what our broker could do and.
I agree. And in the meantime, it's costing tens of thousands of dollars out of our general fund to maintain this building.
Um, Gigi, I had a quick question as far as, um, the value and also, um, a recommendation from you. But synergy is something that you have in your community, because I, I keep trying to look at it from a process of what's in the best interest of the community. Um, we've had two offers before. One was a mental health facility and one was townhouses that the neighborhood was worried they'd make Section 8. So we got a lot of pressure, and they were actually more offer, more money than this. But we kind of fell down, oh, we don't want to do that to the neighborhoods, not in the best interests of the community. So from a perspective, and I don't, I know you don't know synergy as well as, you know, you don't work for them. But as far as a community, um, giving something back to the community, I do remember, and I'm not sure, um, when the timeline, but they are a 501(c)(3), is that correct?
Well, um, I'd like, let me, I'd like to reserve my time to come back. But instead of me answering for synergy,
Yeah.
Jim McMahon is here, and, and I think it would be better, I, I'll step aside and, and he can come in and kind of answer your question, because he knows, um, I know the individuals.
Right.
I don't know the inner workings of synergy.
Right.
Okay, I just know what they do. I know the players and stuff. I'm not representing synergy. I, I hate to pass the buck, but.
No, no, that's fine. I just do remember in the last,
If you can address that to them, I think they can.
Presentation, Jeanette had said that the school accreditation should be done, and I don't know if it's been done. So it is a school. I just want to reiterate that this is not something, it is a, it's a school, is that correct? I mean, I, I know that we did have some discussion on that, because again, it's more of a, from my perspective, it's about what best serves the community. And, and sitting there doing nothing but giving the bunnies a place to live, because there's all the little stray bunnies y'all have at your houses, so they live there. So that's all it does right now. So as far as, uh, they, uh, that's, it's kind of funny if you drive down there. But it's just something that I wanted to reiterate, that I do believe it's a school. I do think it's an institution for learning. And in our district, we continue to try to find a diverse learning opportunity for our community. We're trying to partner with St. John's, First Coast Tech, GP, we have a new program with GP. Renee Huff goes out and does everything she can to offer diverse learning, um, advantages for our community. So I guess I just want to reiterate that that is something that's continued to be the main focus with synergy. So.
Okay, let me try to answer that. Uh, Jim McMahon, 1410 LPGA Boulevard, Daytona. Uh, with respect to synergy itself, synergy is a for-profit company. Synergy Academy is for sure a nonprofit entity, a 501, uh, operation. With respect to the accreditation, July 28th is the date. So there's every expectation that it's a done deal.
Right, July 28th.
July 28th. And once that happens, uh, at that point forward, advertising will be allowed to move forward, because you can't advertise legally unless you have your certification.
Right.
Pell Grants, financial assistance and so forth will be available from that day forward. The school could actually enroll students and move forward subsequent to that date. So, um, if the board would be willing, not to interrupt the flow, I'd like to address some of the comments that were made earlier as well.
Okay. I just wanted to establish that. So Synergy Academy will be hu- housed in the Campbell Building. There's also apartments and rentals for, like, the coffee shop and, um,
Yeah, the proposed mix, it'd be a mixed use.
Okay.
Uh, would be the zoning designation. Once we get through the school board, hopefully successfully, then our next stop would be the city hall to, because the jurisdiction would change. And then they would have to go ahead and approve, uh, in essence, what would be a planned commercial development or whatever the local equivalent is.
All right.
And then that would be a multiple mixed use. They would include some apartments. And we're thinking a dozen more or less. There would be a deed restriction against any subsidies for those. You know, uh, there would be a, a home for Synergy Academy, the nonprofit school. There'd also be some office space, including an incubator for businesses, and, uh, a food and beverage operation, bistro type, uh, in there. So that would be the, the components of the mixed use.
And the one appraisal you brought to the last meeting, the 390 value, that was done, what was the date? And did you pay for that or that was ours?
Yeah, let me go ahead and, and cover the, the cover sheet again. Read it back into the record, please. Uh, it was done by Walter Messer, state certified general real estate appraiser, with a P.O. box here in Palatka, so I, I don't know this person. I assume that he's local. It was done as of May 11th, 2015. It was done for Douglas and Hedstrom Law Firm, which I assume was the attorney of record for the board at that time. And it's for 200 South 7th Street. And the short version of the cover page here, personally inspected the property, et cetera, et cetera. And in my opinion, the subject market value as of May 11th, 2015, date of inspection is $390,000.
And there was other comment made about it's not usable in the current state. What was that statement?
On page 15 of this same appraisal, there's a question that says, is it functionally obsolescent? And the answer is yes. Is the external obsolescent? The answer is yes. And on page 13 of this, it also defines exactly what that means. And if you want, it's a sentence. I'll be glad to read it to you. If not, whatever you'd like, to actually define functional obsolescence. Your, should I or should I not?
Sure, if it's only a sentence.
On page 13, func- uh, and this is a quote, "Functional obsolescence is caused by flaw in the construction, materials, or design that diminishes the function, utility, and value of the improvement." The improvement being the overall structure. So in this particular case, the heat and cooled area is approximately 25,000 square feet. The, Jim's best guess of the functional square footage, after removing the hallways, where you would call net leasable area, is probably 17,000, 18,000 square feet. So if we take, uh, and I'm kind of blending in here just a little bit. If we look at a building with a 17,000 square foot net usable area, multiply that times 20 bucks a foot, that's 340. Our original proposal was 325. You have an alternate proposal in front of you that, uh, I'll speak to should the opportunity arise, and hopefully it does, as to how we bump that up in the rationale behind it. So that's kind of it. The 325, by the way, translates to just over 83% of the appraised value. So I once, I mentioned this last time, I want to be sure that the board is aware that even the 325 number, although it may seem small, is proportionately reasonable to the appraisal. And the alternative that you have in front of you, which makes a adjustment between the cash dollars and the in-kind dollars, goes to 100% of the appraised value. Um, one other item to address the superintendent's comment about going back, um, and I had, can speak with specific authorization on this. This is the final, last, and best offer. And that's a direct quote from Jason verbatim. And what I can tell you is the only adjustments that I'm authorized to make is in a little bit within those limits of dollars and in-kind. But if the original offer still stands, the alternative offer is less cash, more in-kind. Excuse me, because when we played back the tape of our first meeting, it seemed as though there was, um, a willingness or a, a desire on behalf of the board to go ahead and try to get better value for the kids. So what we did is took the incremental difference, and we gave a dollar and a half in in-kind for every dollar of dollars. But, um, that's kind of where we stand on the, uh, on the two offers. A or B, or there's a little bit of negotiation can happen, you know, slide one up, slide one down. But, uh, that's kind of where we stand.
I know, I, I know I had requested that the superintendent or the attorney look at, trying to find a way if this is what the board chooses, that we maybe make part of the money, whatever the maximum is for the foundation, so we could double our money from the state by a tax-free contribution, that would help us double that amount of money to serve more pre-K kids. So that was something I had asked.
Yes, sir.
My next question, Jim.
And may I speak to that?
Yes, sir.
I, I did, uh, check with Jason on that. And by the way, of course, he did see the tape, and it was a, a very good point. Jason has no problem whatsoever in the board determining the addressee or the, or the payee of the check. So however you folks want to structure it, it's fine with him.
And the information I have, and Charlie can add to that, is that, um, the state pretty much, on a property sale, requires us to, uh, put that money in our capital fund.
That's right.
Right.
But if they make a donation, uh,
It would have to, I mean, I don't know. I don't know the legal aspect of that. I just know a property sale would have to, you know, the proceeds would go, have to go to capital. But if Charlie has any other information on that.
Even the in-kind stuff, it would be, I, I'm, I'm certain that Mr. Douglas could figure out
Part of the in-kind.
How to skin the cat. And my next question would be, uh, if, if you were not to have the education component and you went strictly apartments, wouldn't there be a, would there be a, a, a very, uh, high impact fee for that?
Well, if, as I understand it, in Putnam County right now, there's a moratorium against all impact fees.
Is it really?
That's, that's what I understand.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be any additional revenue to the community county at large. There's a moratorium.
But if we are to sell this building to this company, it does go back on the tax rolls.
That is correct.
Not back on, for the first time.
For the first time since it's ever been built.
Gets to, to get property tax on this building.
Looked at, we had that calculated as well at the last meeting.
Yeah, if it's at 1.3 million, if that's the assessment.
But as, as, once, once it starts, yeah, it, it is a substantial.
I think there's some consideration too. Uh, if Charlie doesn't mind addressing it, um, I just want to make sure some questions are asked about the in-kind and some considerations. Uh, do you mind just maybe commenting about that and some questions we may want to have answered?
Sure. And if I could start on more of a global level. At our last board meeting, uh, the goal was to try to nail down and further develop what the district would be getting with in-kind. Uh, what the cost of tuition would be, how many students we'd be able to put through the program based on the numbers that are provided, the duration of the classes, all of those matters. So we asked for more information on an apple. And what we got was an apple, and now we have an orange. We have a choice A and a choice B. I had hoped that this time would have, um, been spent to get to the bottom of a, a much more thorough analysis of what the in-kind would be, and, and we don't have that. Um, so if the, the message from the prospective purchaser is that, take it or leave it, um, based on what you have before you and what's, what we are able to analyze, I cannot recommend that you accept in this form.
Charlie, may I interrupt you at that point?
I just have a few more things to say about the in-kind that the superintendent, um, asked about, which is the, the educational credit. And Mr. Galloway will be able to speak to this. We, we don't know what the value of that educational credit is. We have, um, the district must use 25 to 50,000 dollars of credits per year. Any credits not used within seven years of occupancy are forfeited. There's nothing in here that would prevent Synergy from only allowing the credits to be used at their Volusia County campus. Uh, there's nothing here that says that those credits must be used at the Putnam County campus. Or when the clock would start. I, I would recommend that if there's going to be, uh, some type of in-kind credit, that the, the timeframe would begin once the building is completed, not, uh, at the time of,
Closing.
Of closing.
I think it says that, okay.
Yeah. Um, that's, uh, one thing. And then a second consideration is the, the keeping track of how many credits have been used, at what time, how many, what, what the balance is at any given moment. Uh, that, that's an issue. And, um, also the, uh, line of credit, we, I, I do not recommend that the board would be satisfied with a line of credit, but instead an irrevocable bank letter of credit that cannot be taken away by the prospective purchaser at any given point in time. So the good news, I think, is that there's an opportunity for further discussion between the Realtors. And by you rejecting this, or if you choose to accept it, you can accept it. Uh, but if you reject it today, that does not cut off the lines of communication with this prospective purchaser. Uh, the communication I would anticipate would remain open. And the Realtors would continue discussing and, um, attempt to bring before the board something that, um, could, could be recommended and accepted. Did I answer your question, Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Um, good points, Charlie, straight up. The irrevocable letter of credit is what should have said, that's probably my fault when I was scribbling stuff down. You're 100% correct. Irrevocable letter of credit from the bank, no question. That's a guarantee. With respect to the timing, I think Rick brought this up at the last meeting. Um, I put in some phrasing about seven years of, uh, occupancy, thinking we would start. As far as this actual start date clarification, no-brainer, real easy. Those are minor language issues. When I talk about accepting or rejecting, I'm looking at the macro view. I don't want to keep coming back and forth on the numbers. I want, what I'm talking about is, let's go ahead and set the numbers, they're fixed, they're established. Then we've got to work on verbiage and language, and what is a credit meaning? I, I do have, and I, and I did make two attempts to come up and set up meetings, uh, here in the interim, how, to try to answer those questions about, um, what you get for the money and what does X cost and Y cost and so forth. And I do have some, um, numbers from Jason and what's provided for those educational services. Be glad to go in them now, or we could talk about them in the future, at, at your pleasure. Um, I have three price points that are fairly fixed, and I have a fourth, um, kind of a general, however you want to use it. The accounting would happen, uh, usually what we've done in the one in Holly Hill. It calls for quarterly accounting back and forth between the parties, and then it's basically a sign-off. So there's always a diminishing balance, so everybody knows where they are every quarter. It's, it's a balanced or adjusted back and forth. So again, I want to be real clear on the numbers. The take it or pass operation really is focused not on the, the verbiage, it's on the values. So I want to be clear about that. And if I came across that way, my error. But the intent here is, we don't want to go back and forth on, oh, I think it's worth this, and I think it's worth that. Because once again, we have to go to the city, get our zoning uses, complete this transaction, and time's moving on. And I think you may recall that at the last meeting, I was rather insistent that we tried to get this moving forward on the ASAP schedule, and that's where it is now. Gigi's 100% correct. I was late getting this back up to you guys for consideration. So again, for that, I personally apologize. Uh, the first one is basically what it was. And the reason we put the second one is when Jason looked at the tape, we took that incremental difference and that addressed some of the value considerations. How do we get a better bang for the buck, from your perspective? And we tried to address that with a dollar and a half for every dollar, at 100%, which translates to 100% of the appraised value. So having said that, you know, uh, if there's a resolution from the board and a vote, you know, I would say maybe we go back, accept that the resolution might have language that would include, uh, something to the effect that the dollar values are established, subject to clarification of, you know, the legal wording and verification of values as a, as a suggestion. Be glad to, try to answer any more questions.
Do you want to?
Questions? Vito, uh, Vito had something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Vito.
Still reserve my rights.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'm going to make this short, I just want to address a couple of things that got brought up. The first thing is, I like to know who's accrediting Synergy Building. Who's accrediting? Is it SAC? If it's SAC, great, that means that their program is legit, and, and, and the students that are there, which is not that many, we're only talking about six, 10, maybe 15, depending on how you arrange the cash versus credit. So there's not that many students that's going to be benefiting. But if it's SAC accredited, that means it transfers over to a state college program for a degree. So that's good. If it's not SAC, then that's a bit of a debate, and that needs to be flushed out. So that's number one.
There are other accrediting agencies, sir.
But would, would, would the state college take them?
We will, I, I work at the college in admissions, there are other accrediting agencies.
Okay, well, as long as it's legit.
I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah.
Right, all right, so having.
SAC's the big one.
SAC's the big one, okay. So having said that, okay, so, second thing is, the new law that's coming into effect October 1st, that does not preclude, if, if somebody comes in, which I don't think would happen, because we already have three charter schools, plus we have the Cambridge program, so there's not that much incentive to, for, for another charter school to come in to our community. But if it would happen, and they would homestead that property, that does not preclude us having the ability to sell the property. They don't own it just because they come in and homestead and use it for free. Okay, so, so I want to clarify that. That means that the earliest they could possibly use that building, if they did come in and use that new law that's coming into effect October 1st, would be the school year of 2018, 2019. Well, that would give us then, basically, a whole year to sell the building.
It would be trying for three.
Right, okay, so I want to say one thing, I told Jim I'd say this, and that is, what Synergy is proposing, we, in the, in the South Side, in general, from people I've spoken with, do not disagree with. And if they came into our, our community, we would want them to be successful. So what they propose to do, which that mixed-use building, that's fine and dandy, I personally think that, that, that the initial idea of mixed-use is going to change with time, I think I'm pretty much assured that that's going to happen. But we don't disagree with what they want to do with the building. So, but we want a fair price for that, and like you said before, I think it should be a cash dollar value, because I don't think that we should, that we should incur the costs of training Synergy employees. That's the way I, that's the way I view it, that's my perception of it. So the only other thing I want to say is that if we choose, or when we choose to sell this building, deed restrictions should definitely be a serious, serious matter, because if Synergy buys it, or whoever buys it, and then they go around and turn it and sell to somebody else, we have no control.
Right, that's the city of Palaca, we have nothing to do with deed restrictions.
No, the, the sale, I think the sale has, you can have an agreement between the seller and the buyer on deed restriction that would influence what the city does. So that would be, as an example, no drug rehab center in Pla, in the Putnam, in the county.
In Putnam County.
Yeah, no, in the Cambridge building, Campbell Building.
Campbell, your name.
Right, okay, sorry. All right, so.
Allegra, oh, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to try to answer as we go. Yeah, Vito and I did have a chance to have some conversation, and that was good. So with respect to the deed restriction, I don't think there would be a problem putting, not only do we have a deed restriction that we've offered with respect to subsidized housing and such as that, Charlie would draft the language, and, you know, presumably, we don't think that would be a problem. In terms of, somebody had mentioned earlier, a flip of the property, I don't think there's a problem we put a five-year moratorium on the, you know, transfer of ownership, with the exception is if we condominiumize the building, instead of making apartments, we make condos, the form of ownership changes initially, then of course, you got to sell the condos, you know. So that would be the only precursor, but as far as putting a, a five-year, it's got to stay the way it is, that's fine. And I don't think there's going to be a problem on excluding certain uses, you know, even for a longer period of time. For example, apartments, once you spend, I don't know, $20,000 a door, converting them into apartments, which is probably a bargain number, that it's going to be very unlikely for anybody to want to go in there and change them from anything other than that. You know, as far as saying it's a general commercial use, again, even though it's in the language, it would have to be approved by the city under the planned commercial development, that I think that wouldn't be a problem on our side, you know, that's a 15 years or something. And we can certainly go along with excluding specific uses, you know, i.e. rehab centers, you know, those types of things. We did that in, in Holly Hill, we have a list of probably 20 items that we can't do, gas stations and, you know, all this type of stuff. So, you know, that's not new territory for us, and I'm pretty confident that Jason would, would go along with those. As long as it stays as, you know, office, professional, commercial, the little food and beverage opportunity, you know, I don't think that would be a problem.
Yes, Allegra.
Allegra Kitchens again. As far as the October 1st thing, you all, the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement is already using that Campbell Building for training exercises. All you have to do is lease it to the Putnam County Sheriff's Office or the Palaca Police Department, then it wouldn't be considered vacant, you have no problem with whatever it is about the charter schools coming in, no-brainer. The other thing is, if the entity that owns it is a nonprofit, they won't be paying any taxes. Now, I understand that the entity you're dealing with, it's going to have the very few school classes in that, that building is a small percentage, it's going to be for the school. You all are looking at it as education, and I would like for it to be education, very small percentage, I don't remember if it's 14 or 40%, very small percentage of that building is going to be used for the Synergy classes. And they told you last time that Synergy Academy's not going to be the one that's going to own it, that's not who you're dealing with, it's somebody else, but if the other person is nonprofit, there won't be any taxes. And the other thing is, is this, as an individual citizen, as a person, as a woman, I have never been bullied by anybody. You threaten me, and I'm going to draw the line, that's it. As an elected official, I never, never gave in to bullying. Now, the developer, Mr. McMahon, he sounded like he was bullying you, well, if y'all don't do it today, we're gone, and that's it, you can kiss us goodbye. That is typical developer threats to try to get people to do what they want. If I was the developer, I would be up here and I would do my damnedest to get you all to sell me that building at $162,000. Don't fall for it. If they are going to take their little toys and go home, then fine, let them go. I don't think they're going to really give up, because you got, they've got a really plum deal here, and they know it. Don't be bullied. My final thing is, do not accept this thing today, say no. Thank you.
Just say that it is. June.
Is that okay if I speak again? I'm June, again. I have dealt a little bit with real estate, I was a real estate agent, and I have five houses that I own. Anyway, so I know just a little bit about it, but it looks to me like bottom line, again, y'all are going to get about $39,900 cash for the school, the rest of it would be in-kind.
That's one of the.
No, that's one option.
Oh, well, that's one op, but that's an option.
Yeah, it's an option.
That's an option, okay? That's an option. I, I would like to say that the, he did mention that, like, with the amount, he can offer, the $39,900 was on that contract that we saw.
Option B. It's an option B.
Okay, well, it's on, it was on there. Anyway, the in-kind, and like he said also, the in-kind can be adjusted to be any amount. I mean, I could offer you like $39,900 cash and say, we'll give you $1 million in, in-kind, and we'd be much closer to the amount of money you want. I mean, in-kind can go up or down, it's the cash is what you need to be looking at, more so than the in-kind. And, and from what I'm seeing, he's benefiting from all the in-kind, the, the company's benefiting from all the, the in-kind, so you've got a for-profit company that's benefiting from, in every way is what, is the way I see it. I also would be interested in knowing if the building would, if they are getting like tax deferments for a while, I mean, they may not have to be even paying taxes for a while. And also, like, the TIF money, the, they are in the, I think, the Central Business District Tax, the TIF money. Anyway, they would be eligible, I guess, for some of the tax money, which we have been paying in, and so they would be eligible for some of that to restore their building with, which is still not money coming out of their pocket, it's money coming out of our pocket. And also, would like to know, I mean, that's like, I think $20,000 was the amount that was given that, that I heard about. Anyway, okay, they're a for-profit company who's renting to a not-for-profit company, and so who are the differences between these people? Are they the same, just like different entities with a different name? If they are, then that's just kind of like, what, a for-profit company putting a, a sheet in front of it, I mean, calling it something that it isn't, it, they're still a for-profit company. And who would benefit from having them move into that building the most? Would the community benefit from them coming into the building? Or would the for-profit company benefit most from them moving into the building? Okay, also, they are saying, they're basing their amount that they want to pay on the, what, $390,000?
Appraisal.
What is that amount, it was appraisal? Okay, but I bet what they have in their minds is not the $390,000 appraisal. They're thinking, we are getting a building that's appraised at 1.3 million plus for $39,000 cash, okay?
I do want to say, I don't think I've ever seen a 1.3 million dollar appraisal.
Well, that's what Allegra, I think.
Well, the tax.
Okay, the tax, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I just, for the paper, I just, that's important for me to say.
I misspoke on that.
Yeah, and that's okay.
I'm sorry, I did, I misspoke, but anyway.
I believe there was an appraisal done prior to the 390, maybe a few years before.
So there is another one out there.
With Hoover Million, yeah.
This is a million, okay.
Well, anyway, the, whatever the name of that was, they're still getting a 39, they're paying $39,900 for a building that is on whatever for 1.3 million, okay?
Thank you.
And then, Palaca, I just wanted to say this, and Palaca's, as far as selling it later on, not having to take this offer, which I think, you know, just business-wise, this is really, really bad. But Palaca's starting to get noticed again, I mean, the houses are starting to go up again, and so I think that if you gave the building a little more time to sell, you know, advertise it some more, get the word out, you know, do some history reports or something, I think it could sell for a lot more. So, and again, if you decided to sell it just for 39,900, I'll buy it.
Jane, everything, everything you said, everything you said is, sounds really good, and, and it's things that we need to think about, but our attorney has already recommended that we not go with.
Yes.
What we're talking about, and that's what he has paid to advise us on, and even if this board, let's say I don't like what's going on, but if a majority of this board votes, you can bet they're going to try to vote for any way they can to maximize however in-kind contribution to, to benefit the kids and the, and the young people that will be trained at this facility. And, you know, we're not, we're not there yet, but I, I think, you know, I, I would encourage, I like in-kind stuff, if you can take a donation from this group and you can double your money through the donation, then that's, to me, that's good business, but, I mean, that, that's just the way I look at it. Would I like to see more money? Yes, and I certainly would.
Of course, well, you all want that.
But, you know, we're, we're not there yet, but I am encouraged from Mr. McMahon's statements, that I think he and Mr. Douglas may find a way to, you know, pull a rabbit out of a hat somewhere down the road, so, and if they can't, we'll, we'll have to figure it out. But I can tell you, even with the October 1st deadline, you could, like Alicia said, put $10 down and let the Sheriff's Department lease it. I guarantee you, the state's going to have that thing wound up so tight that an attorney's going to walk in here from some conglomerate of charter schools, and they're going to say, we're taking that building, and, and that's about what's going to happen, so. Charlie will have to educate us on that.
Could, could I ask Gigi, just to talk again about?
What's your first name?
June.
June, I'm, I want to make, I want to look eye to eye at you on something, and I'm going to tell you, if I can sell that property for $1 million, I will donate 100% of my commission back to the foundation, okay? All I ask is that you'll give me $50 worth of gas money to get back home to see my wife, okay? The building is, y'all need to get in your mind, regardless of it's 300, 500, 700, we're throwing a number out of 1.1 million.
It's not going to happen.
It's, we got, we got to get over that part, okay? Somewhere I got convinced this group, that this building is going to sell somewhere between, forget about in-kind, but probably somewhere between 350 and 750, okay? Everybody that's saying this, I will donate 100% of my commission if I can get $900,000 for this building. It's not going to happen. I would like to sincerely tell you, I'd give, give you that commission, but it's not going to happen. It's not going to sell for that price. It's not going to sell for that price tomorrow or next year.
Well, right now, it's selling for 39,900.
No, 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 it's 162,000, no, I represent the buyer, I'm not, I mean, I represent the seller, not the buyer.
But the bottom line is, who does the in-kind benefit? Does it benefit the community, does it benefit the school?
Yeah, absolutely.
14, about 14.
I want to talk a little bit about in-kind, I want to, if you don't mind, let me just say something to y'all about the in-kind. Here is a, a situation that I'm asking y'all to review. We see this all the time in public-private when we see in-kind. I'm not a forensic CPA, okay? So here's what we have, we have a, a seller that a buyer has come and is trying to host, buy the property at what I'm going to say wholesale, okay? But they're turning around and wanting to give you, what I believe, in-kind or up, what I call uplink, at retail value. So at some point in time, I'm not smart, I can sell you dirt and I can sell you buildings, I'm not a forensic CPA that can tell you the real value without the owner telling you the real value, or the buyer telling you the real value of what that in-kind service is really worth to you and dollar amount to, to, when we play this game. My recommendation to you is that you take some time and find out what that real value of in-kind is, to put a true value away. Don't let the realtors tell you what it is. Synergy can tell you, but I don't know if, if, if Synergy is up here or down here. So I would bring in a nonpartisan person, not me, y'all bring in a nonpartisan, to evaluate and put a real value on the in-kind to see if you need more in-kind, or what the real value of in-kind. I think between the realtors, we can come back and get you value on the money if you like to go with in-kind. The other thing that I want to caution you about setting a price tonight, is if you set a price tonight without analyzing this a little bit more, you have just set the benchmark for what that property will only sell for, for the entire future. If Synergy walks away, and y'all agree tonight, say, okay, we got a deal, but we got to work out the in-kind, for any reason, if y'all can't negotiate that deal, the value of that property now is public information under the Sunshine Law, that y'all would have taken whatever the price was. So I, I would ask that, that Synergy or, or Mark, work, we work together to try to come up with a building and, with a price that they're happy with and we happy with, but you set a deadline, start with an end in mind, that by X date, we'll have this all done, and then you fish your cut bait, and then you move on. And then for all those people out there that think that you can get 1.1 million, please bring me those people.
Really?
We're ready to sell it. I can tell you right now, if somebody brought you a $648,000 or $750,000 contract, you better take it.
Jump on it.
Okay?
So, yeah, and I, I mean, you're.
I'm sorry, Rick, you had a question, and I. Very implacable.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we establish, you talked about present-day value, you know, kind of, you alluded to that, and you kind of gave a range.
Well, you know, this is coming from the, the buyer's side, I have not been privy of this, of this appraisal. I guess it's been hidden somewhere in the archives somewhere, it sounded like it was done, what, 2015? So I think everybody would say, is your house today worth more than 2015? I believe so. So there's what we call a present-time value of money, based on what you think that increase is. So if you have a real MIA appraisal that was done in 2015, the property is worth at some point in time, more than that. I can guarantee you, if there's an appraisal that was done at a million dollars, it was probably done at the height of the market around 2004, 5, 6, or 7. probably done at the height of the market around 2004, 5, 6, or 7. And I can show you, a lot of property in the state of Florida, that was at the height of the market, was a million-dollar property, that we sold for 350 to 500, they sold for anywhere from 20 cents to 50 cents on the dollar. So what is assessed or appraised, it might be statute law, but there is, I will put my professionalism, there is no way, under the sun, that that property is worth 1.1 million dollars today.
And I want to ask Mark the same question, because he's been in this, on this community as far as, I mean, so what is you, what are your, a professional opinion, we have two professionals here saying, what do you think this property is worth? This is your job, not mine.
For the record, Mark Spalding, 3400 Crow Avenue, Palac. Madam Chairman, Board, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. First of all, I think we're all missing the boat here, I haven't heard what this is all about, it's not about money. I promise you, Mr. Galloway has spent more money on this project already than he's going to earn in commission, I guarantee it, ain't no doubt about it. The school board is here to educate our children, and that's what this is about. How much education are we going to get? That's who's going to benefit, are our kids, bottom line. And I've sat up here, and I've heard people talking about, I'm vested in this community, I'm vested in this community, there ain't a person in this room, other than myself, that has their grandfather's name on that building, and that's me. John W. Campbell, my mother's father.
Yeah, but your brother John, right, his name, John Camp.
My brother is named after John Campbell, that's correct, John Campbell Spalding. As far as value, what Mr. Galloway said is absolutely correct, this building is worth not a penny more than what someone is willing to pay for it. Since it came out in the paper, that they were, that the school board was entertaining $325,000, I have had certified general contractors call me, and say, please show me that building, and they have seen the building, and they said, I'll buy it for 325. When they leave, they said, don't ask them to give it to me, I won't take it.
There you go, case closed, let's vote, seriously.
I agree.
Come on, this is, this is a no-brainer, my gosh.
But the attorney needs to hammer out some details.
I understand, but we've got to move forward with this.
I don't have a problem with the, with the language and the details, the, the credit, the amount of credits, I don't know what they are, but educating our children, and bringing jobs, and edu- educating these kids to high-paying jobs, not pushing a broom, but technical jobs, that's what we need, it will grow our town, it will grow our community, and put spendable income back in everybody's pocket.
Madam Chair, I'd like to see us move along from this topic, and from what I heard, the buyer is willing to negotiate on everything but the, the numbers, the price. Will the majority of the board direct our attorney and the buyer to keep negotiating on everything except the price? Are we willing to do that? I'll make a motion that we direct our attorney to keep negotiating with the buyer, with the understanding that the price of 162.5 plus in-kind of 162.5, details to be worked out, and that, that's not to change. So I'll make that motion, if you could get, get that passed.
Before, what, if you get a second, then I'd like to say a couple of things.
Okay, I'm making a motion that the board direct our attorney to continue negotiations with synergy, with the understanding that we're accepting 164.5, 162.5 cash, 162.5 in-kind, details to be worked out. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, well, I, before we vote, I'd like to ask the board attorney, I mean, I certainly, it was, for me, the building was worth more to me as the district, as some type of, of way to continue us using it for years, and maybe using it as a way to find an in-kind grant to get the money, use it as a way to, in other words, facilitate it in a, in a manner where we get matching funds. And, and there's ways to, you know, find money to, to second chance, and charter, district charters, that you might get capital outlay, and I say, might get capital outlay, it would take time for our attorney to research that. What I do ask, if, if the majority of this board ultimately votes on this, is that we let Mr. Douglas try to work with Mr. McMahon's group, to find any in-kind way, whether it's in the foundation, to, to take, instead of some, you know, seven-year period, like Charlie said, or, and, and just let the man make a tax-deductible contribution that doubles our money to serve kids, in other words, instead of getting $50,000, we're getting $100,000, because we can take that little bit of money and match it. And I know the state says you're supposed to take sales of capital properties and, and put it back in a certain manner to be spent, but there are certain ways to take, this is going to be, going to be worked out by the attorney and Mr. McMahon and their firm. So that's all I'm asking, is if this ultimately comes to a vote, after they, that Charlie looked for ways to maximize the in-kind to really help.
I want to make, I'm sorry to catch off, I, I want to make a point too, and I brought this up earlier, we have time, and we've got our, our broker we've hired to look out for our best interests. And again, I'm, I'm as much motivated to sell the buildings as each of you, but I want to make sure we are being good stewards of our property, and to make sure we can maximize what we can get. And I understand, we can't get the 1. whatever million dollars, I understand that, but there's a, there's a place in there, that, that's why I asked you to talk about present-day value, that I feel that we, we owe it to our taxpayers, we owe it to our, our students as well, but I want us to buy some time, and ask our, our broker to negotiate and look at that price, at what, what is a better price as far as present-day value? And I believe the 325 is not within that present-day value. So I would at least ask that he goes back and, and look at negotiating that price with the other broker, then he can come back to us at a later time, and then we can make a decision. So that is my recommendation.
I think it's, the caveat is, with an end in mind.
Right.
I, I, I think you put, like, a two-week window on that.
Absolutely.
To try to do that, and, and sure, we'll be more than glad to do that.
Right, and, and again, we can talk about the time, but my main thing is, I want to make sure that we do our due diligence, and to make sure we get the best value, and I understand, we, some of these numbers that we talked about are way out of line, but, you know, we need to find out, what is the buyer willing to pay, and based on, you know, we've got a, we've got an appraisal, what is the value of that, that building now, two years after, so...
Do you feel like maybe doing comparables on the MLS? I mean, specifically, I just, you know, I'm not a real estate agent, we have two experts here that are kind of diligently working, so is that something that you want to pay for another appraisal, or you want comparables, or what do you feel would be the best avenue? Just ask Gigi to...
I think Gigi could answer that question, based on his experience.
I'm just curious what you would think that would be.
This is Ben's backyard, but I, I feel 100% comfortable, there is not a single comparable out there for that Campbell building.
I agree.
Not one single comparable. Every building that anybody talk about, this bank, look, look at the ceiling tiles in this, look at the lighting in here, the electrical in here, versus probably the, the lead pipe, that sewer pipes that are in the Campbell building, okay? I walked into the stairwell the other day, and if I'd had a, a three-year-old daughter, she would have fell over the stairwell, because now the rails have to be this high. It is, it's a functional obsolescent building, so you cannot compare a building built in 1922, even if the school board redid it, I'm, you know, when y'all redid it, there's, I'm sorry, I, I've got plenty of buildings in my hometown, I have no comps for.
Well, and that's why I tried to say, at the last time we talked, SREF, State Requirements for Educational Facilities, more than likely would not allow even a charter school to utilize that building without a considerable investment. So you're going to have to have sprinkler systems, you're going to have to have things done.
A lot of things.
And a lot of, lot, some work, so, but it's still square footage is what you're looking at, and I can tell you, Mark Spalding's granddaddy was mayor of Palac at one time, he brought Hudson-Pulp &amp; Paper to Palac, which made Palac, and that school was named for him, he was a fine man, and I have a great deal of respect for the family, and I know that education was a big part of their family, and that his, Mark's dad was on the library board of directors for many years here in Palac.
I'm going to recommend too, that if, if, you're talking about time, we, we have a board meeting, August 1st, I think is really putting too much pressure, but I think August 15th, if we could have a deadline of having an agreement reached before August 15th meeting, that's my recommendation.
I will also commit to you, just to show those people who think the value is up here, and I'm not challenging people, I'm just saying, wherever you think that value is, it's elastic, it goes, you know, it's like a rubber band. And so what I'd be willing to do, is within 24, I mean, by tomorrow morning at noon, is to, if you want to see the real value on that, I'm just going to pull this number, if we got it listed at 965, we, let's say we drop it 465,000, I can blast it to the world, property dropped $460,000, if you want to see if there's really people out there willing to pay $600,000 for it, I can blast it to the world, I can have over 27,000 people looking at it, and let me tell you what, you'll find out, it's, it's going to be the benchmark, but it'll tell you where their value is, and where some other people's value is, and so, you know, give me permission to do that, and I'll blast it to the world, then reduce to 560,000, quick sale, come one, come all.
I have, I have literally no problem with that.
I don't either.
My problem is, or just, to me, it's just not, I listened to the former superintendent, and God bless her, make comments about that building, that I thought every time she did it diminished the value of the building, that value of that building is, is what it's, is what Mark said, it's what somebody's willing to pay for it.
Do we have to get consensus to do that, or just...
We'd have to direct.
We have a motion in a second.
Y'all have, y'all have a motion on the floor right now, but I, I'm just saying, I need permission from y'all to do a drastic drop like that, so I'll, y'all can comment after your motion on the floor.
And I don't know if, board member Jorgensen, if you want to reshape your motion, I, I would have some legal remarks about the initial motion, but if you wanted to withdraw that to go something along the lines of what Mr. Galloway recommended, then I'll save those comments.
No, I, how should I reword my motion?
So what's before you now is a, an offer. You can, what I would say to the board is, you can accept this offer, you can reject this offer, you can put it on hold for now, let the real estate agents talk among themselves, maybe put a, a date on it for the August 15th board meeting, to see if we can come to terms with this particular prospective purchaser. So if you do nothing with this right now, if you have no vote, that's what will happen, is that the two real estate agents would continue working, and by the August 15th board meeting, we will know if we have a deal or not, because Mr. Galloway would be able to come to the board and say, I have an offer in my hand that I can recommend that you take.
So table the motion?
So you're not recommending that we take this, Mr. Galloway? Yes, sir.
The offer as currently written.
Man, y'all like to put me on the hot seat, don't you? I, I believe the offer needs to be twerked, I don't care how you call it dollar or like kind, until you get somebody forensically that can come in and give you, we can give you a real value on the dollar they're offering for the building, okay? I cannot begin to tell you, on in-kind services, are, I, I personally believe, but I'm not a professional, on their type of, what they get for their services, I personally believe they are giving you a retail pricing on their in-kind services, okay? I'm not a professional in their field of business, okay? So if, if you're saying, will you take this offer, I would have to say, I need to have time to go back and talk to the buyer, the buyer's rep, and say, here's our concern, we are close, we are that close to making a deal, but as I told y'all earlier, we have to do some give and take, and right now, I believe y'all are paying more for the in-kind than they are paying you for the property. But I'm not a professional on their in-kind services. You know, does that mean that you get more in-kind services from them for the future, and it's over a 10-year period? Does that mean that if they condominiumize that, that y'all get 10% of any profit, because we're hearing now, that they may condo the units? Does that mean that you, that we negotiate, and you become a participer in the profit? If they, if they condo it, does that mean, if Jason sells the entire business for $2 million, that you put a clause in there for 20, for 5% or 10% of the profit? That's why I'm saying why it's tough to make a decision today on the dollar amount. That's fine, ladies and gentlemen, we might take 162,000, but guess what? We're giving you a hell of a deal, I don't care how you do it. But we need, we need, we need a little bit on this side of the aisle, and what can you sweeten the pot with? I heard it, we might condominium. Hey, I've been a condo developer, if I put land in for the deal, and I get preferential distribution, I get a percentage of that condo if you sell it, if I put my land value in cheap. I'm just saying, it's negotiating, and that's what I'm here to do. They don't want to hear that, but I'm representing y'all. I have no problem with the dollar amount, what I have is what they're giving you, if you accept that dollar amount.
And you're right.
I believe you should get more, they're going to disagree with it.
From the business standpoint, as far as school usage, the SREF cost to bring it up to par is going to be astronomical compared to condo usage.
I, I'm, I'm...
So I'm, I'm telling you, and I know there's, I agree with Charlie giving...
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Galloway.
Here's the way we do restaurant leases, you want to get it cheap, we get, every year, we look at your gross sales, not your net sales, and your rent is increased by your gross sales. So we, we'll give it to you cheap, but you got to give me some gravy on the backside.
Did I understand correctly, Mr. Galloway, that it would be your recommendation as the board's realtor, to, in the meantime, between now and our best chance of creating a, a deal with this particular prospective purchaser by August 15th, to reduce the advertised price to $600,000, and see what kind of reaction that we get from the market?
It is my recommendation, if we can convince the buyer to hold tight with us, let us do, let's, let's let the general public say, we have marketed to the world 550, you tell me a price of 600,000, and we had no takers.
I would prefer that you did that, but that's me, and I didn't, I didn't favor the original thing.
And, and, and the consequence to that is you may be coming back and accepting this very same deal.
Yeah.
Now, the consequences to that, I let me, as, if I, they might about another property, but guess what? That's what we call negotiation. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose, sometimes in a card game we fold, you know, so anyway, I hope I answered your question.
I would draw my motion, will you draw your second for now?
Yeah.
So we don't even need a motion, we're just going to, okay, we're not going to have any more public comment, we're going to bring this to a close.
I just have one question, if we continue to negotiate or get more specific between Mr. Spalding and Mr. Galloway, is that something we could still do in the process? I don't feel like, you know, they're trying to move forward, I don't feel like that would have to wait till August 15th.
Most definitely, most definitely.
So we could, the, the board could direct the realtors to work together with the, with...
I, I can honestly tell you, Mark doesn't work for free, and I don't work for free, okay? And we're willing to commit to get this thing tied, sealed, delivered ASAP.
So I, I feel good about that, and I thank you, Mr. Spalding, for keeping your grandfather's name in the best interest of the community, and that's exactly how I keep looking, it's for the best interest of the community, and I appreciate your comments, that did mean a lot to me, and I do think that's where we need to move forward, so...
I agree.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, we want a consensus to drop it to a price of 5?
I'll make a motion, do I need, I don't need to make a motion.
No, we don't need a motion. We don't need a consensus. What is it, what's it about?
Do we, Charlie, you tell me, let the attorney tell us if we need a motion.
I think for the purposes of the discussions we've had so far, it's probably best to come in the form of a motion in a second.
I would make a motion that we let the board, we direct the board attorney to have the authority to lower the, the asking price, or, or the original price, we had it, we were at, what, 900,000?
Wait, stop mumbling.
Spit it out.
First of all, let's say what the board wants, do we want 500, do we want 600, do we want 529?
I was going to 600,000, don't you?
Okay, so you want to say 600?
450, and see if you get bites, you think it's...
600?
600.
I was going to say 600, and, and that way, you're the negotiator, if you get 600...
We, we have our, the, the board's, real estate agent, and maybe he would recommend a particular price.
This was psychological, if you're gonna say 600, please say 595.
Well, what, wait, is that your recommendation, or lower?
I, I don't, we, we gotta get, we gotta get off this pivot.
Right.
Right now, we're at a pivot, I don't care if it's 495, that doesn't mean it's gonna sell for 495, you might, we may be back here in 15 days, you just saw, you just saw the personal representative of the buyer walk out the room, okay?
Yeah.
So he says, it's done, okay? It ain't done till it's over, okay?
It ain't over till it's over.
No, it ain't over, and if it's over, it's over, so what? I mean, you know, it, there, there's plenty of fish out there in that ocean, okay? And, and you gotta have...
Got a fish, we'll get some different bites.
All I'm just saying is, I don't care if you put 595, the only reason I'm saying the 595 has nothing to do with synergy, is to let these people know that it's most likely, most likely, it is my professional opinion, that you're not gonna get an offer at 595, you might get some at 525, 475, or you might get an offer at 395, so all I'm saying is, let's the people know that we have done everything physical possible to get the highest and best dollars when somebody wants to buy, and will throw, you know, everybody wants to buy it until they put the money up.
And what, and what we don't want to do is sit here and say, we will take X amount of dollars for it, just to get it offered back, let's see if in, in 15 or 20 days you get any bites on this.
But I can tell you this, once somebody sees that contract, it will be out in public records tomorrow, that y'all are gonna sell this property for 162,500 dollars.
Somebody said 39.
Well, some, at C, I mean, but, but that, I'm just saying, the misinformation that can get out just like this, then now everybody's gonna be calling me, say, I want to put an offer in at 169, so all I'm just saying is, it is my recommendation that you allow us to, to immediately do a fast-track marketing, and instead of your 600, it's just like, we're in the car business, 595.
595, 573, 15.
What is it back now, please? What's it listing?
960, um, wait a minute.
995.
995.
Well, if we could knock 400 grand off and say 595, that's...
That's what I'm saying, it'll be, it'll be a, a, reduced 400,000, quick sell, quick sell.
Reduce 60% of...
Okay, so you want to make your motions?
Well, I, I would like to make our, the motion that we reduce that asking amount by 400,000 dollars, and see what shakes out.
Except what apples fall out the tree.
What, what falls out of the tree, and Mr. Douglas will certainly be in touch with them to...
And to direct, uh, Mr. Galloway to continue communication with the current prospective purchaser.
And to, for heaven's sakes, Mr. Galloway, I love Jim McMahon, because I think of him wrestling Donald Trump with the, uh, you know, WWF, so, it's a different Jim McMahon, but anyway, if you'll continue negotiating with them, and, and, and open in honesty, and, and ways that may benefit us, with somewhere in the mix, we may find something good.
Make a motion, come on, one sentence.
I made the motion, reduce it 400,000.
Yeah, but you keep talking. One sentence.
I, I'd make a motion, we reduce the asking price from 900, or maybe, what was it?
995.
995, but we, we reduce it by 400,000.
595.
And?
And?
And we continue to negotiate with the current bidder.
Okay, there you go. Second.
May I read you the motion?
Yes, please do.
How'd you get that down?
Mr. Buckles moved to direct Mr. Galloway, the broker, to reduce the asking price to 595,000, and to also continue negotiations with synergy on the current contract offer.
And, and I commit to you that Mark Spalding, and I will do that together.
Please.
Okay, you have a second?
I would have a little more faith than you.
And the second was by Mr.?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you both, Mr. Galloway, Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, both of you, thank you, person. All right, Mr. Buckles, do you have a board report?
Um, oh my goodness, y'all won't believe this, I've got to go over here and give a board report that's gonna take me standing up at a microphone. When I was a kid, Ms. Crawford obviously taught me when I was in elementary school, but I, I have known the, a family in the Stokes Landing area named Green all my life, a Mr. Marvin Green and his wife, and his children, Pam and Cindy and Melanie, and Pam, I've known my entire life, I think she was voted everything in high school, from best looking to...
She, yes, you were.
The best dancer, to everything you could be, anyway, Pam came, she, she moved away from Putnam County for a while, and Carol Reed was his superintendent secretary for about 300 years, and, and Pam, having been a legal secretary, came back and, from, uh, Wake Ross?
Brunswick.
Brunswick, Brunswick, Georgia, they've named a bridge after her, they call it Pan Am or something Bridge, I don't know, anyway, Pam came back and we, we hired her in the district office, and she was Terry McCool's secretary, and he never did anything, I couldn't get him to work, and I found out it was, found out it's because Pam did everything for him, so, when Carol, when Carol Reed retired, and I, I loved Carol, and still do, I wound up being fortunate enough to obtain Pam as my secretary when I was a school superintendent, and Pam, Pam knows it was a trip, but that she can tell you, there's no one in this room that can sit here and even imagine what it is like to be the school superintendent, not just in Putnam County, but anywhere, because you could have someone have a heart attack and die in your office, as we had an unfortunate incident one day, and I had to yell for Pam to call 911, and we lost a, a very valued employee, and 10 minutes later, somebody comes in and they're angry because they're not having PE at their child's school, it's, it's just, it's a bizarre set of circumstances that you deal with when people, they have no idea that you're dealing with life and death situations every day, and regardless of what kind of problem you think, or deficient problem the school board or secretary are, are, are working on, there's always something worse, we've got people that are, that just have horrendous problems, and, and live and die, and, and nobody knows about it, but Pam's been through the best, she's been through the worst with me, and she was, I can tell you, she's been a soldier in the trenches for, I, I think, Mr. Townsend after me, and, and for Ms. Chriswell, and now for Mr. Serency, and she has retired, and without further ado, I'd like Rick to come up, and Pam, come out to the middle, all board members, if you would, come down and come right out here in the middle, and we have something that Nikki got together, and with the board members, and got for you, so.
Thank you, her all is a doing.
Oh, my goodness.
All your favorite places. Yeah, your sister helped.
Okay.
I gotta get a photo of this guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so, so much.
Thank you very much.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, she was his before she was yours.
There you go.
Three, two.
Oh, that's perfect.
Congratulations.
This is a piece of cake, but it is not, there are really times when you don't really have any idea of what went on that we deal with, it's terrible. Run to help Pam.
Thank you very much.
Pam?
I don't have anything else, Ms. Cummings.
Okay. Um, I do want to reiterate that Pam is so wonderful, no matter what the stressful situations the school board members have undergo, she always calls with calmness and says, well, we have this, we have that, it's always like, oh, but I do appreciate your great disposition, you're such a wonderful part of our, I'm gonna miss you so much, because I know I could call her and just, and just, everything's good, because I talked to Pam, and we're gonna be fine, so thanks again. Um, I did want to thank the county commissioners for reinstating the paramutual funds, I feel like, it's, sometimes we have these things, just like, things come before a school board, and maybe we, you know, Rhonda has to make things that we don't really aren't aware of, or things change, and the parents come, so, I felt like, once we went and kind of pleaded our case, and they realized how much it was gonna affect us, that they were very supportive, and I did talk to a couple after, so I do want to thank them for that, and, and continue to work together in partnership, because it is such a, a partnership, as it continues to be with whatever, the Campbell Building, again, it's in what is in the best interest of the community, and I, I feel that, um, passionate about offering something new, as far as jobs, training, anything that's gonna help our students when they get out of high school, I can't help but thinking those project praise kids, that we have 95% graduate, which is amazing, but they're homeless kids, what are they going to, you know, and I know we do have some free college, but there's living expenses, there's food, there's car, there's gas money, so there's other things to think about, when we can offer one more opportunity for students in our community to have a career, then I'm gonna support it, whether that's a trash collecting school, or a welding school, or a barber school, anything that's gonna give opportunities and keep these students where they can, they can't afford to maybe go live at a college, even though they get free college tuition, but there's still a lot more to it, so anyway, I look at it from that perspective, helping the community by helping train our workforce, um, parents, students, whoever decides they want to start a career, so that's why I'm so, you know, for synergy being here, so, anyway, hopefully we can work it out, move forward with that.
David, did you have anything else?
Just that I know I seem like I ramble, I'll hear it from my sisters, when I, I think out loud, I'm not as, as, I'm not as goofy as I act sometimes, but I know I may not be the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I've sold and bought enough property that I, there are some parameters that go with how you sell something that, or buy something that you do, and it's, it's more complicated than it, than it looks, and that's it, I just, I do think out loud, and, and maybe shouldn't do that sometimes, and I do think quietly, so, I will quit rambling, Kevin.
Ms. Jorgensen? I'd like to echo what Nikki said, Pam, you have been wonderful, and you will be sorely missed by me, and also, I agree that if synergy comes in, and we get more educated people in Putnam County, we will have economic growth, people won't mind moving here, because we have more to offer in the way of education, and we're supposed to be about education. I hope that the negotiations do continue to go well, because, you know, there's all kinds of people we could sell the building to, there really are, many different kinds, and this is a win-win for the neighborhood, for the community, for the school district, and hopefully for synergy, because they're the ones taking the big risk. The other thing I wanted to say is Debbie DeGubellis ran a workshop committee for the in-school long-term suspension, each high school is gonna have in-school long-term suspension, um, some of the details worked out, the principals were here, the deans were here, and other players in that whole thing, and it's gonna be different than Solution Center, but in some ways, it's gonna be better, and remember that our middle school students will be going to the high schools for this in-school suspension, everyone agrees, we want to get Odyssey there, and we want to make sure they keep up with their work, or maybe even catch up. So that's all, Debbie did a really great job, I don't know how she does it with all those big, big pages on, makes notes, and then puts it all together and gets it out to everybody, it's amazing, and she really did a wonderful job, and I was very pleased to be, watch it and be a part of it, and that's all for me.
Okay, I just would like to say, I received a letter in the mail from the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, and our superintendent, Dr. Rick Serency, has successfully completed the program and certification requirements of the Florida Superintendent's Special Certification Program, and we are very proud of him, I know that was a, a lot of learning, wasn't it?
Financial exam's the worst part.
Yeah, so he has received extensive training, and it says specifically for Florida superintendents in school law, school finance, collective bargaining, the superintendent's leadership role in improving student achievement, and core concepts of leadership, so we're very proud of you for completing.
Thank you.
Very, very, thank you. I too, and am excited about the prospect of synergy coming to our community and what they can offer, but I'm not excited about the offer that we've been given, I hope that it can be worked out, I hope that, you know, they're saying no more money's gonna be put on the table, but I'm not happy with what they have offered, and I hope that we can negotiate that, because I too feel like those training opportunities for our students were more, one more opportunity for them to be trained, to have a good job, would be wonderful for Putnam County.
Everything is going well in the legal department, we've obviously been pretty busy, and we look forward to continuing to keep you updated as the real estate matters come to a head, and shortly.
Thank you, Charlie.
It's been a long meeting, and we're gonna wrap it up quickly, but I do, I too want to, to say how much I appreciate what Pam has done for me personally, I think the fourth superintendent you've worked for, and she's been smiling every day, and no matter what I go through, you walk in there and Pam's still smiling, so.
She's like me the best.
Yeah.
She's smiling because you're not there.
It's all how you finish, David, but, anyway, she sets the tone for that office, and I just personally want to thank her for everything she's done, and best of wishes in retirement. And speaking of congratulations, I just want to congratulate all of our teachers and students, I just want to highlight what our district has done as far as our school grades, and, and our district grade, and I sent this out to all the school, all the employees, I mean, by email, but I want to highlight that 15 of our 20 schools, and I'm not including E.H. Miller, because it's not graded, but 15 of our 20 schools showed improvement percentage-wise in their school grade, may not have gone up a letter grade, but they improved, and I think we really need to celebrate that, because they're moving in the right direction, six of our schools actually improved their school grade, and we're actually gonna, going to be appealing some of those grades, because I know at least one school was within a percentage point of moving from a D to a C, so, we just want to make sure, you know, there could be, there could be just a handful of students that can make the difference, so we just want to go back and review that, but, um, our district grade, that's been a big push of ours, is to improve our standing in the state, and this is in the paper, but I, I again want to highlight that we've moved from number 64 to number 62 over this past year, and again, we want to continue that trend, and, you know, move to the upper half in the next few years, and percentage-wise, our district improved from 42% to 47%, and again, we're still a C district, but we're continuing to improve, we move into the 50s, we could be a B district, so, you know, we're on the threshold of some great things, we have some momentum going, and I want to congratulate our school administrators, our teachers, our district employees, who everyone has a part in that, so, let's keep up the good work, and we're moving in the right direction.
And don't forget parents.
And parents, absolutely, parents are very important to our process, yes.
One thing about Pam I would like to add, I don't know if you've noticed yet, but you can tell, when her, she gets real high pitched through her nose, she is angry.
Only been angry you, David.
She's retired now.
I haven't seen it yet.
She's not gonna get it that way.
Yeah.
I haven't seen her get angry.
I would just like to say that, how blessed I've been, and I have not worked for one superintendent, or anybody, any administrators, that I did not believe and know that their heart was for the best, for students of Putnam County, did they have different ideas about how it should be accomplished, or different ways that they thought it would be accomplished, but every superintendent, including Dr. Serency, who, who I've not had the privilege to work with long, but I knew Rick for a long time as, as a principal, and they are about what is best for the students in Putnam County, all of us really are, and I just wish that the public could understand how hard everyone works, I've rarely worked with anybody that I thought was just sloughing off, I mean, we all have our days, but for the whole, the people, or the employees, the faculties and staff of Putnam County, really have children's best interest in mind, so thank y'all for 31 good years, and I appreciate all the work that's been done, thank you.
Let's give her another hand.
Yeah.
Hey, Madam Chair.